The first article by state law is general amendments. I've been informed we have nothing added to the general amendments in addition to the pay orders. I would ask for the minutes of 9:20, 21 to be approved. Do I have a motion and a second for discussion?
I make a motion to approve the sub-ordinance of 9:20, 21. By seven.
Anything to add to those minutes or questions? Hearing none, I'll call a motion on favor of minutes being passed. Aye. The pay orders for 10:01 are currently $23,709 and 94 cents. There being no additions, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve those.
I make a motion to approve the pay orders in the amount of $23,739 and 94 cents. Seven.
Hearing no additions on this floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any vote? Road Commission's report, we have Steve Landshur here from Highway Department. I don't see that yet.
No, I'm not sure if he's going to show or not. We've been on grade and ditch work and trying to get it finished up, trying to get the world, back road smoothed up so we can finish up on the brand bill, state project up there. And other than that, that's basically what we've been doing. Showing Lori all the routes that she may have to do with this winter. And you know, she asked her way how to drive your trucks. It's not the same kind of truck she's driven before. And she's doing good, she's doing very good, very good, and having no troubles whatsoever. None. So I want to thank you for that. Basically, that's what's been going on, grabbing and grading and then smooths. Hopefully, start back up on the brand bill this week and get that finished up before the end of the year. Great.
You and I were talking, we're just now, I was explaining to you, because our stuff that's coming through is still kind of hazy. In our paperwork tonight, we got some guidance from BLCT. I'll be honest with you, it's going to take a day or so to read through it. As usual, BLCT managed to give us quite a package of stuff to read through. Obviously, being here tonight and worried we'd get to it, hopefully, we'll be able to give you some better guidance on these stuff. Anything else from Road Commission?
Nope, nope, we're just going to keep plodding away and get the roads, back roads straightened out, make sure everything is good for the winter and get this project done up on the brand bill and maybe haul in some more sand before winter hits. I commit on the weekends on my own time and I do the services on the truck. I got everything, the only thing I have left to do is one ton. I just do it on my own time because it's kind of like therapy.
I'd say that there is more than they're doing some maintenance and holiday and everything.
Yep.
Thank you for that. I have a problem.
I have a quick question. So Steve, I don't know, I'm like the newbie here. So with the overbrush, the brush that hangs over the road on the bridge, who takes care of that brush that grows up there?
On which bridge?
The bridge that goes over the Dillon Fire Station when you're going up 140 east towards Timman. There's so much overbrush there, you've got to walk in the road right now.
Where the tree, where the branch came down here?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as the leaves come off and the branches aren't quite so heavy, I want to get out there with the crew and take all the way down through there.
I don't want to put more on your plate, I just know, and I wasn't sure whose jurisdiction it's on, so.
No, that's ours, that's ours. Yeah, and I've already got a plane, I want to go down through there before winter hits. You know, after the leaves come off and branches aren't so heavy, pulling the ladders down and everything like that.
Right.
And go down through there and turn everything back as much as I can.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
I need to bring in, how's the street coming? Are we enjoying anything on that road? Remember, Eric P. Man?
Oh, I understand.
No, I, I understand.
I get, I get all our lists. I get all my lists, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. And until we get everything else situated, I can't do this. But yes, and the only way, I'm not even going to tell you how I'm going to do it. But when I get this, all this stuff straightened out, that's my next project. I want to go down through there and clear everything off, and I'm not going to tell you how to do it.
Move it back or no?
There you go.
Well, good then, we're good. Thank you, Steve.
Anything else about letting out?
Will do. Down to public comments. Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Are you here for the public comments? I assume that you're with the Lynch, Gilz, and on home, or our, for?
For the West Hill Cemetery.
Oh, my son, oh, that's good.
Okay. I don't think we actually put an article on the agenda for that either.
Yes, yeah, we've got a stamp here, I want one. It's on here. It's a statue, I want one.
Okay. Hearing the other public comments, we have the stuff on the property map lines at the last meeting. I'm still not sure whether we should go ahead and do it or not. I believe the way it was left was that if we skipped this year and did it next year, it would be $3,300. Or if my understanding is correct, if we do it this year, it'll be $1,650, and then $1,650 again next year. So either way, I believe it's going to run as $3,300. We do have $2,000 in budget currently. Rather than having the budget to $3,300 next year, would it be better to go ahead and do the $1,650 this year?
It probably would, I thought.
Don't be giving a hell.
I thought Nimrock was going to do this, for us, also.
He said there was going to be more, because they have to search and scratch.
Okay.
And, but we can't take this out of the reacquisition, save this $11,000 from here.
What we're questioning, $2,000, I mean, so we're going to cover?
What I mean, going forward, like, we can use the two.
Oh, right next year.
My thought was the $2,000 for next year, if we use the $2,000 to try one, and going forward, we can, how do you mean that? So Suzanne, did you say, like, wait till next year and we can use that reacquisition money to cover costs?
Just going forward, just going forward, we could use the reacquisition money.
Okay.
So if you decide to use the $2,000 for this year, going to tomorrow, we could use the reacquisition money.
Okay.
And we have more to go.
That sounds, that sounds reasonable.
So we're on a agreement to go ahead, was that said?
Yep.
Okay, consensus on that. Okay, the Stan Taylor property.
Yes, I was actually waiting for the gentleman.
Just take the truth out of him.
No, yes, I'm, I'm a director of, I was sent here by Bill Muehl, Muehl Associates. And we are the ones that are heading up the borderline adjustment agreement. And was supposed to meet the surveyor, but I haven't seen her, and she hasn't met, but they're looking to convey land to the state of Vermont, approximately about 500 acres. And I think there was a confusion with the West Hill Cemetery, the border itself, and we're looking to make an adjustment to the border, maybe about .24 acres, to cover a specific road that is an access point on West Hill. So I'm not sure what you have for information, I didn't have much coming down, but actually, aware of the meeting came to last night, so I apologize. But it looks like we're just trying to do a borderline adjustment on that. And I really wish that I had a map to show, but she hasn't shown up. And she said she'd be here around seven, that's all I'm sure. Let me know, right?
If you're, was that a tip, you see, you know, that the town was, oh, the cemetery is?
From this letter from John.
Way out on the edge of the road, that's, when you go past Dougway?
I was going to say, I went past Dougway, but I couldn't find the cemetery, so I assumed we didn't.
Yeah, you go past Dougway, and there's a little red place on the left-hand side, and just up around the corner, you'll see a little gateway right there.
It's a gateway, unless you're with the can, it's way out, I won't say, maybe 50
yards out into the woods right there.
Yep.
I wonder if that gateway was where it was, or if it was going to just?
So right now, property line is right at the center of that gateway, so it's two separate property. And we're looking to move it to the end of the gate and adjust it probably about, I think about 40 yards to the cemetery, and not to cover that road. I'm sure you probably know what that road is, it's an old, old modern road.
Yep.
And we're just trying to convey it so that it's easier access. I know the state did not want to have the cemetery conveyed to them, so I think that's why we were trying to establish a specific border between the West Hill Cemetery and where the state will take ownership of the land from Taylor.
Hi. Platform, cleared by? So has there been a license survey?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And is this based on the survey? What you're proposing based on the survey? Okay. So I would say with what John states in his letter, maybe we go with what, what other people think. It seems like John is saying, go with the survey, and not so much the map.
Well, my interpretation is that he thinks the property in the cemetery belongs to Howell, Howell Cemetery.
Right.
I mean, there's no record that the cemetery was ever conveyed to the town, so I don't know at this point.
But it looks like John is saying that it could have been a family cemetery that was turned over to the town for maintenance. He's questioning that. Do we need to table this and discuss it a little bit more, do you think?
This is Dougway here.
Oh, okay.
Hi, guys, I apologize for being late, I got there around 7:00, so my fault. It sounds like there's, would you like me to kind of run through this a little bit?
That would be great.
All right, I've got a couple of extra exhibits here, if you want, that we can all look at that might help a little bit. May I pass it out to everybody?
Yeah.
And again, apologies for being tardy, I thought I was.
Okay. Did you guys get on, did you get the contract section, two quarters? Not, I don't think so, two quarters. Do you guys think it's not going to be enough to tap?
May I make this a little bit formal for you guys, in terms of starting from the beginning? Does that work for you? Or do you want me to answer questions? How would you like to proceed best?
Is the circle area here, is this the only place that there's a change in the plot line?
Correct. So, so my name is Deb Daniels-Minler, I'm a land surveyor, and I am working on behalf of now, can I turn the field, sorry, come back to it, it's so down, it's easier for you. I'm working on behalf of Marisha Taylor. When I started this project, Mr. Taylor's stand was still with us. And Stan, just to give you a little bit of background on the property, you may or may not know this, but over the years, starting actually in the 1980s, Stan Taylor acquired land up there on West Hill. And he actually acquired nearly 600 acres of land up there in six different parcels of the land. Some years back, Stan decided that he wanted to take generally the property out of his and his then-wife's name and put it into an organization, an LLC called West Hill Road Realty. So as I talk about this, you'll hear me talk about West Hill Road Realty and/or the Marisha Stan Taylor property, they're interchangeable for all practical purposes. And if you guys are okay with it, I'll just call it the Taylor Land, if that's all right, that's rolled up in the home here, the West Hill Road Realty. So, so a couple of years ago now, I was asked by Stan and Marisha Taylor to survey their property. And so I've kind of chipped away about it, actually, it's a fairly significant project for me, and we've worked on it throughout different times of the year. And we've completed the survey, and in the course of the survey, we turned up a couple of boundary type issues or use issues that now we think we should try to clean up, so that at some point in the future, when Marisha should convey something, everything's all good to go. And one of the issues that popped up has to do with the West Hill Cemetery. Now, if you look at the tax map, okay, which is the map that I gave you, it's got the blue line around generally the Taylor property, and then you look at that area that I circled in red, that's where the West Hill Cemetery is under the tax map. Now, on the ground, I don't know if you all are familiar with it, but that area is bounded on all four sides by a substantial stone wall. So there's zero doubt in any of our minds physically on the ground where it exists, okay? Now, if you look at the other map that I just gave you, it's a copy of a survey of the, and I'm going to butcher their names, but Lynn and Mary Ann have all had her, is that great? Thank you.
That's all I can, that works for me.
I hope I'm right, Mary Ann. This is a little survey that was done for their family back in the day. If you look at that same little area, you'll notice that their boundary lines do not include the cemetery. And in fact, the surveyor that did this survey clearly did not include the cemetery as in the title for Lynn and Mary Ann's property. And you can see there, they even have bearings and distances around that stone wall. And when I surveyed it, the information that you see on that map played out well with visible evidence on the ground. So I'm super comfortable with the fact that the Lynn and Mary Ann are not claiming any prior interest in that cemetery at all.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So I see the cemetery.
Yep.
Bottom of that there, and then it says Carpenter.
Yes.
Is?
Carpenter is now a Taylor.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Gotcha, and then there's this boundary line, now where is Lawton, there's man up here?
It's all of this, so here's the cemetery, this is West Hill Road.
So they're on this side?
They're on both sides.
They're on both sides?
Yep.
But, so what is the indication that, because I see it says Carpenter right next to the cemetery? I've done a tour of this survey, but I don't, I don't, I, you can see how this kind of goes through.
Yeah, it comes.
How does it share that the cemetery?
Here's the road, it comes up to a point on the stone wall, and then the stone wall comes this way, and then it comes up, and then it goes down.
I see the order of thought to show it's very comfortable, right?
Yep, I see. Would anything else left me this morning? Follow along? Just to get that one?
Thank you.
So, so from the land surveyor you're describing, I felt really comfortable, based on this survey, it's recorded in the land records, and I forget what date it is on there, but it's been recorded. Actually, no recording date, that would help, doesn't it? But what's the date on the survey is?
1938?
19, yeah, that's right, so it's been around almost 100 years, and everybody's reliable, okay? Now, when I did the title work for Taylors, they bought the land from another name that I butchered, Chavell, right, is that how they said it, C-H-V-A-L. And those folks, right, came after Carpenter. And when I read those deeds, there was no call for the inclusion of any interest in the cemetery. So my conclusion there was, okay, basically, Taylors are not claiming an interest in the cemetery either. So then we fast forward to the written document that I just gave you, which is a document that Stan Taylor entered into with the West Hill Cemetery Association, right? And that being recorded in your land records, and I also found a copy of it in Stan's records. Stan's present wife, Marisha, was great, sort of. She went to Stan's files and she brought me like six different files from the filing cabinet to pour through. And in there, I found a copy of this document that you're looking at, and I also found a fairly complete file of his correspondence back and forth between the select board, or actually the county administrator at that time on behalf of the select board and Stan, whereby there was a negotiation between Lawtonburg and Taylor relative to acquire from six burial plots there in the cemetery, okay? And what you're looking at is the result of that back and forth. So what we know, and there's stuff we don't know too, what we know is at that point in time, the select board was making decisions about the West Hill Cemetery, and kind of Lawtonburg actually had the West Hill Cemetery Association. Now, that actually is a very common thing, you guys probably know that, that there's like three ways a cemetery is sort of exists in Vermont, and two of the ways are that it's governed by the Cemetery Association, like we have here, or it's under the even more direct control of the select board. And when I was reading about this, the select board also with their discretion may assign commissioners, but I don't think they're kind of lawfully correct, because I'm still trying to figure this out, and I don't think you have a board, a cemetery board of commissioners. It looks like you all are, are in the board. So I put out, actually, Linda's been great helping me try to track things down, and what I have here, which I can leave with you, I didn't make copies for everybody, but she went back in here a minute for you to quote ten, and she actually found the entire correspondence between the select board and Mr. Taylor that brought us to this point. And I'm happy to leave this copy with you so that you can pour over. But basically, what it was, was Stan wanted plots, so he offered to fix up the cemetery in exchange for plots, and the select board at that time said, well, that's a great offer, we'll take you up on that, but we also want $100 per plot. So that was sort of like a back and forth thing, it started like in April and ended in, was it September, I think, is the date maybe on that document, which is when it finally all came together. So what I, what we've been trying to find, and we can't find truthfully, is probably it was a family cemetery at one point in time, and probably what happened was there was either, I think we all know that over time, sometimes things were done by the book, and other times things were just done for convenience, right? So it's hard to know if the transition from a family cemetery to municipal cemetery occurred by deed, or if it was just like, you know, we'll take it over sort of thing. But what we do know is at a point in time, Lawtonburg decided that that should be an association, but what we don't know is if that has followed through, or if it was abandoned. And so I got a letter in from the Secretary of the State's office, where according to everything that I've read, the West Hill the West Hill Cemetery Association should have filed as a corporation with the Secretary of State's office. And that paperwork should have been maintained. And if it wasn't maintained, then I guess we got to figure out what, what that actually means.
From where? That's what I was going to ask.
Right?
That if nothing is on file, and it's not a corporation, what does that mean?
And I think like at a point, once we, because like obviously I'm here to kind of give you background information and see if you've got interests. And if you've got interest in what I'm about, we get to, then we, we get the lawyers more involved to see like how this really plays out. Because what the proposal is, is in that survey plan that I put together that you got in your package, is in the course of my work, we know the cemetery is there, it's well bounded by its own walls. There's also a well-traveled road from West Hill leading to the gates on the south end of the cemetery. There's a, the stone wall comes around, and then there's a nice eight or 10-foot wide gate there, a nice metal gate that still works on the stone post, it's truly quite beautiful, that leads into the cemetery itself. And as recently as this year, the town clerk approached Marisha Taylor for permission to pass a recast over that road to get out to do some maintenance in the cemetery. So what Marisha's thinking is, why don't we make it so that the town of Lawtonburg owns that area over which the road now travels? So now there's no like temporary easements, which is basically what this is viewed as, the roads there. On an as needed basis, the town calls up and says, Marisha, will we cross over your land into maintenance? Or, I don't think they've ever buried it there in like 50 years, but if there were, it'd be a burial, same thing. So that's what she wants to do, is make a gift, if you will. I mean, not, gift's probably the wrong word, but she just, she wants to adjust the boundary line so that the access to the cemetery is with the town as opposed to with her or any future owner of their property. And it's pretty much that simple. So what we see on the map is we don't believe we have any interest in the cemetery. But if we do have interest in the cemetery, we want to pass that interest to the town. And for convenience sake, where the existing road is on the ground, we want to convey or give up interest in that over to the town as well, so that now that West Hill Cemetery is, and the access is holding with the town of Lawtonburg.
So what I hear you saying is that, is it named Marisha?
Yeah, Marisha.
Marisha, Marisha would like to give the town the cemetery and the access to the cemetery.
The access to it, she definitely wants to give to you.
Okay.
I personally, it's my opinion as a surveyor that she has no legal interest, if you will, in the cemetery. That it's my opinion based on, you know, the fact that it's West Hill Cemetery.
But those weren't her words.
Excuse me?
Those weren't her words. Her words were the road, not the cemetery.
Not the cemetery.
Okay.
However, our lawyer wants to say, but just in case we do have interest in the cemetery, we want to give to you guys too.
Okay.
We just want to make it, or there's, you know, how like the quick claim deed, or like, I don't think I own this, but just in case I do own it, I'm going to sell it to you, sort of thing.
Right.
It's that sort of thing. Stan does have six plots there that he's paid for, right? That's not what we're talking about when we talk about the cemetery. There isn't. Almost we take the cemetery itself out of this conversation, and we only look at that like third of an acre that I got through the roads around the cemetery.
Mr. Clarification, I'm in that here, so is this flying the current boundary? So you're doing, you want to do a triangular, basically a triangular?
Basically, of course. Yep.
And there's, you're stating the road there. I was up there this weekend, the only thing I saw was a gate and a metal. Where is the road?
Gate and metal. Maybe you went too far up the road. Did you see the cemetery anywhere there? No, okay. So, so you went too far up. You know where Lynn has this like Christmas tree frame, or apparently that Christmas tree that was their, what is it, capital or something? Couple of years ago. So when you come up that, did you come up that road?
No, but I, once I got like 200 feet past Doublway, I figured I was, I had passed the cemetery somewhere, and I turned around.
Okay, so you come up the Doublway and hang left.
Yeah.
And then there's that red house that used to be the schoolhouse on the left. And if you just go a couple hundred feet further down the road from that on the right, there's a metal gate, a little road, a culvert that crosses underneath it. And then right up there at the top of the hill. And you'll see where I actually set out some tall stakes by the road. One, the, the, like the southerlymost limit of that little triangle, and then there's some more going up through the woods.
So it's not a great metal gate that you see on the road?
Not with the metal, no. Go through the, the.
You're thinking where they're, they were sugared last year.
Right, right, and sugared.
Right across from the little red barns and stuff, you're thinking of?
Yeah.
Or just a little, no, you were way back, way back for that.
Okay.
But that road that goes up to that cemetery, that wasn't, that road wasn't that good a year and a half ago, because somebody was up in there logging here about a year, year and a half ago. And they, well, they made that a road for the logging trucks and stuff to get in and out of. That's why the road was smaller, substantial up there now. But the only reason I knew it was up there is if you don't walk out the road, you won't see it. You really won't see it. You, you'll drive very light. And I was up there with the grader, and I was great to roll, and I stopped for, had a snack or whatever, and then just happened to walk out through there. And I stumbled across it, and I went, oh, yeah. Cemetery out of nowhere.
So that's kind of in a nutshell what, what we've got is, I can tell you that Lynn and Mary Ann don't own the cemetery. And I can tell you that Taylors don't own the cemetery. I can't tell you exactly how it came into being with the town. And I can't explain to you whether or not you all have the sole responsibility for it, or if you share responsibility with something called the West Hill Cemetery Association. And I'm trying to check with the Secretary of State's. Your town clerks look pretty hard. Unfortunately, the three names on there that signed on behalf of the West Hill Cemetery was supposed aren't around to talk to us anymore.
Well, I apologize, because when I walk, I get curious, and I look at names on the stone. And I wished I could remember who the names were, and I can't, I really can't. That was, oh my God, that was two years ago. It just, it just don't seem like those were any of the names.
So our goal would be tonight to try to gauge interest to see if this is something that the town would be interested in working with us on. And then if so, how you like to do that, basically. You know, what, what more information do you need from us? That sort of thing. And I would love to either head out there with all of you to give you a tour, or, you know, hopefully I did a good enough job. I'm sorry that I didn't, like, I should have just, maybe. Because you're at, the cemetery is way up there, so it's not like you can just see the cemetery. But to show you on the ground also what we're talking about. But anyway, I did put out stakes, and I did flag that north log that's common with cat wall. So, you know, that's, that's where we're at. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I don't want to bela, I don't want to belate it globally, or do we either?
In the date of paperwork that you gave us here, I don't see an actual reference to the road that goes in there. Our, actually, I don't think anybody on the board here has had much time to study any of this. Our town assessor, John Tiffany, has made contact a couple of times. I've emailed him a couple of times. What he appears to be looking at is that as to the town effect, there's only slight change in the acre to cat wall that's going to result from this. And I'm not sure why it's to cat wall. He mentions that the, the cemetery itself may actually be in property owned by cat wall. So I'm not really sure what the connection between your survey for Taylor is in relation to what has changed and the assessments will be. I, I hate to table it for the night, and have you back again some time on it.
That's not a problem.
But just looking at the map here, I don't see a problem with us on the board as long as, the only thing that's affected is this small area here. It's not like you're making a whole quadrant change or something of a massive. I think as long as we're protected maintaining that roadway in, our passing into it. And I'm not sure whether we're currently maintaining any of that cemetery itself, but even that would probably not be in relation to the right of way that you're in reference to. So at this point, I really won't see an objection coming from the board. At least not one that I can see. I would, we're actually meeting you give at week next Monday night. I think we probably should do diligence and have John look at the documentation that we have. I'm sure that the way he is, he's probably looked at a lot of it already, if it is on record. But I, I think I'd like at least the week to get an idea.
And if you get any information, like what you were looking for from state on the, on the, on the deal, the West Hill Cemetery Association, if you could pass that information away?
Absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely. So I received an email from John.
Yeah.
And basically asking those sorts of questions. And before I responded, I actually did want to check with all of you tonight to make sure that you were fine, that I communicated with him. Just because I don't know what your contract is with him, whatever. And I just wanted to make sure that you were in agreement that if I did have information, or I want, you wanted to discuss it, you all were, were fine with that. And it sounds like you would be, is that correct?
With, it's pretty much yes. When I communicated with John, I pretty much laid out what I thought the procedure for doing it would be. As you know, the town clerk wants to have the files changes. He's going to have to actually calculate out where they go and everything. But I, I don't see any reason that we would have an objection.
So I will respond to his questions. And it sounds like they were your questions, but I don't want to not respond. So if that's okay, I will. And what I'll just say to him is that in the course of my work, the title of that cemetery right now is inconclusive. And I, I did spend some time looking for some sort of deed of conveyance, and the town clerk also spent time looking for a deed of conveyance. I put that on the back burner because I didn't want the town clerk or me running up people's nickels, so to speak, needlessly, and felt that maybe circling back to the Secretary of State's office might be an easier approach. And then give that information to you all to see maybe what the town attorney thinks about that. As far as taking it off the tax rules with the casual, cat wall, Lynn and Mary Ann, that's nothing that I can really get into. I mean, that's, I'm not working for them, I'm working for Taylors, so I'd probably be overstepping with that. But I can tell you that, you know, as far as Taylors are concerned, truly, unless you came back to us and said, you know what, we'd like more, that's, that third of an acre is it. And I have been in touch with your, with, with your zoning enforcement officer. Her name's escaping me here.
Yeah, I got her.
Yeah, Eric, thanks. And the way she would like to approach this is just with a simple boundary line adjustment. Period. And that presumption was made that it was because essentially the title was for the town relative to the cemetery. If it's not, I'll just have to see, because typically it was boundary line adjustment. We're not creating any parcel of land. So we got to be a little bit careful there, because we don't want to make this just your own little third of an acre piece. We want to make sure that it actually is an adjustment to the cemetery and it's entirely, right? So, so that would be something that we have to, to work out. But essentially, she feels very comfortable dealing with this administratively as long as, you know, statute hardly wants the lawyers looking at it. That's possible, which the little bit that I've read seems that that's, it can be that simple if we want to make it that simple.
Sounds kind of agreeable.
Okay. So it sounds like what we'd like me to do is get any information that I might get from the Secretary of State's office. I'll hope that I can have it for you by your next meeting. But we all know that COVID has slowed everything down to a snail's pace. So I can't guarantee that they'll be responsive in time for that next meeting.
I understand, but things you don't have control on.
But again, like from our standpoint, we'd like to see this happen, and we'll take the time that it takes.
Okay.
I'd say it's not like it's got a person telling you.
It's not like you were guiding me there, right?
So, so yeah, so well, thank you very much, Eric, for involving us. Probably too, if you have anything that you might.
You did a fantastic job. So I represent the legal side, working with the attorney that will represent Taylors in the situation. We can wrap up a pretty simple borderline agreement that the town and Taylor would sign off on, just agreeing to that new borderline adjustment. Very simple. I think the, what's the issue really is who owns the cemetery?
Correct, but as Deb was saying, without any deed or any, even one proclamation that really go after, you know, the town of Lawtonburg with that little 23 acres. And it's a pretty simple process. And it's not a complicated, who's to jump to be at that block, or get that little parcel.
Mr. Jaren, if you'd like, I do have some extra interesting reading. Again, I didn't make multiple copies of this, but if you'd like it, I'm happy to leave with you a couple of things that I put down there. One is just for picks and gables that's easily obtained online. It's just the, the Vermont state statute says they apply to the cemetery. It's just background. There's also a website called Vermont Old Cemetery Association. And there's just a brief, little blurb here on what cemetery associations are. And then lastly, I believe it's lastly, yeah, lastly, is there's another article put together by an attorney in May 2019 called "Dicking a Little Deeper." Answers to your subjecting completely fascinating, top promoting, and previously unanswered questions about Vermont cemetery law. And back on page seven, they talk about if we're dealing with an incorporated cemetery. It has a little bit of background maybe in there as well. So would you rather have these than putting them on? So would you rather have these than putting them on Mr. Pissett's website? And my apologies for being late, I thought about it, but I'm not quite so far along with your agenda, so I'm sorry about the whole thing.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you both.
Yes, yes, you both.
We do have a little request from Mama Camara and Camelia. This is the one that's coming in, where every story was to be in there. Road by Don, you're digging, I'm pulling through the town.
But I, I, I see all the time, I mean, you have those.
It is a class two.
See?
Did, did anybody see any problems with the water? This is class two. And, and are they, is the application, who serves in the building itself?
What is class two?
I think that's your line.
Yeah.
Your line.
And is it served thoroughly?
It's five in order to some.
It tells him who to go with seeding.
I ask that only because they are also looking to be in ten, ten seater in progress. And we do have a county food control, so they're serving two.
Hey Sandy, page three, this is, this is devoted primary to please check one. Do they need to check anything? They left it blank. I, I need to hold up the application just for something like that.
Do they need to fill them in?
I just don't want to hold up their application. I'll just tell them.
Aside from that one question, if you can answer more, are you paid for this or?
I'm paid for. Sandy, I'm sorry, I don't think, yeah, if I can, I need to.
Then by consensus, four zero, we approve. We can sign off on it.
Okay.
I just make the provision that that, that will be each guy.
Yep.
that he would enter his resignation from the board. We do need to, if I have a ball down whether we approve the resignation. In the dozen years outside there, I don't think we've ever tried to revoke somebody from resigning, they so wish.
We need a motion.
Good, a motion, second.
Make a motion to accept John McCollum's resignation in the draft. Second?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, with the draft.
All in favor, say aye. We've sent a appropriate, like, two and a half years on the board.
Do we have to post a?
I believe we will need to post it, and I believe it's a minimum of 14 days.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
Yes, okay. Does that get posted on the French port, French forum or?
It's posted more earlier.
Well, I have it not posted on, on the board website, but I also have it posted on the French port.
Quite probably, well, actually, it's 21 days, I think that time I can be, you know, whatever.
Oh, is it tomorrow?
So if we're comments or concerns, open to the board, any of your immediate concerns or? Very none of that.
I think we should thank Bruce and Maureen for ordering up the windows and doors at the, the.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can have that change.
Yeah. Oh, there seems to be a broken during hike on the, the shack off the hill, like, one though, the, so when you walk down the road, that means to the left, right at the building, it's, it's the drain pipe is broken.
The downspout?
You have a downspout, yeah.
I saw that. Anything under other business that we need to?
I see we have some ARCA suggestions here. I haven't read the all of them.
Well, your answers to the questions that came over the forum.
Oh, great.
As I mentioned, Steve, earlier, we did, I'm a little bit guy from the LCT on the ARCA ones. And it was quite, quite thick, it was.
Oh, do you have a guide?
Hopefully we can get into that next, next meeting.
Oh, yes.
Actually, if you all received a copy of the latest provision from Erica on the zoning regulation, again, it was quite a few pages, I believe it was the most on the story, dying pages. The only question I've come out with it is that currently, I believe, the state is still leaving open the opportunity for towns to enter in, they're full of places that will accept businesses to deal with marijuana. And I found that in the, in the regulations, there's a short subject, I think it was on page ten, indicating that the town was opposed to dispensaries in the town. I think probably, given the amount of revenue potential from those kinds of sales in that type of business, I think that before we enter that into the final draft, I think we need to have an actual, I think one of the questions the state has had that we actually put that on the ballot if you're, or the town decides whether or not to allow it in town. I do see the comment in the planning as being in conflict with having another meeting on it or another lowdown on it. I'm not sure whether they should actually take that one line out of the plan or if in their definition they can better define dispensary as strictly a commercial growing, selling, rather than what some of these, the states have had are these, you know, the jellies and gummy bears and other types of material that can be sold. So I'm not really sure what the committee is using for a definition of dispensers. So maybe you can get that to a pair of them, let her kind of at least give us a heads up with what needs.
That would be good. I, I agree with that, yeah.
I have an issue with their regulations on parking camping trips too.
Oh, where, where's that list?
It's on page thirty.
Thirty?
I really don't think we should be telling people where the camping to not park or camping trips under proprietary. The current, the current rule is, states that people have to either be beside or back of their house and then behind the front building line, and there's a lot of places in town, people just do not do that.
I think that pretty much covers the most of stuff. Does anybody have anything else they need to tell the unit?
We see that note on Steve Lynch there, yeah, right there.
I'm sorry.
The note on Steve Lynch there, he wants it in order to be mistaken and covered, yeah. On license junkyard. Well, page seven, Sandy, it's just in your memo, it's not in the town.
Oh, it's on there.
Give them that.
Right in here. See how it, you know, they didn't need to call it on license junkyard, that must be true. You have one, one here.
Yeah.
You're studying one out of the minutes that they didn't need to call it an unlimited license junkyard.
Yeah, I think. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm referring to the junkyard. I think I sent you on an email that regardless, did Eric receive that email that said that they did?
Somebody didn't need to call it on license junkyard, who liked the new ministry plot that is just.
The, the Lynch's, I don't know if it came to me on an email, but there was a comment here that there were areas on that property that is being dealt with, with the heart throw solar system down there that have junk on it, but that they're not a junkyard. I think reading our junkyard status, we're not looking at whether it's a true junkyard or not, but rather whether or not there is junk on it. And if we're to consider that as being junk that should be removed, then by our statute, it would be a violation of junk on the property. And therefore, if it's not cleaned up, they would be subject to municipal fines. I'll tell you personally, I don't know where to go with this. The Lynch's have not said that is their junk, and it really doesn't seem to have anyone who is laying claim to the, the items that are on the property. And there the question, do we start looking at the Lynch's as being a violation? Is it the people that are putting in the, the solar panel, is it their violation? I, I'm not sure where to go. I don't know, I think what the other side of the board really does, if you look in your packet, you also have a energy commissioner meeting today that appears to be supportive of the solar project down there. And yet we had the Lynch's here and heard their side of the story, and they do raise a number of legitimate questions as to the ecology in the area, and particularly in reference of the junk items. I'm not comfortable with, since they're saying, yes, there junk on the property, but it's not a junkyard. It either violates our ordinance or it doesn't. And basically, we're saying it does violate the ordinance, we need to determine who needs to clean it.
I, I wrote a letter to, to that committee that Sandy sent, sent us, and I put down our concerns in the letter, and I identified myself as a select member, and that certain things needed to be addressed, and I haven't gotten a response yet to the letter that I wrote. But I did break off the environment concerns and that there seemed to be things that need to be cleaned up on the property and what was going to happen with that. That was part of the letter. So I haven't heard a response to my letter yet.
Like, I think at this point, we're just going to have to see where it goes from here. I think we're going to have to make it clear that if that property does go ahead, that those violations need to be cleaned up or we will take action on it.
And that's why I wrote the letter, because I wanted something stating that we noticed that there seemed to be some problems on the land. I also noted that there seemed to be a change in where they were going to put the panels and that that would require that the change required more work on the land near the rich property, what were they going to do to mitigate that as much as possible, so I'm just waiting for them.
Hopefully we'll hear.
What's that?
I said hopefully we'll hear back.
Hopefully we will hear back.
Okay.
Everyone should look over the draft on the one that we just received, I do, because they've added a whole big section on solar.
Oh.
And to me, I haven't looked very into it yet, but I'm just scanning through it.
Yeah.
And it seemed like they were giving a lot of leeway for solar that shouldn't be there, I think.
Huh, interesting. Interesting.
Yeah, I read it a lot.
So I think I have some more reading to do.
Are we good? Are we entertaining motions?
Two jurors.
Two jurors.
I think a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.